Your order tonight is Monday, February 24th, 2014. We'll start by taking roll call. Looks as though everybody's here. Director Corman's just about to be seated. I'd like to ask everyone to join me to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, on the nation, in its heart, and for which we have a true right to speak.
All right, thank you for coming out on a chilly February evening. Before we get too far into the agenda, I'd like to grab my glasses and read my notes. We will be having, the board will be having a closed session this evening at 8:30. That'll follow our board meeting tonight, and it'll follow our study session after. So we are, we're looking for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions? All those in favor of this agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, agenda is approved. We move into recognition of student, staff, and public. So this evening, we have a treat. We have, Tom Holton will be introducing our two guests this evening. So I'm going to ask Tom to come on up here, grab the microphone, and start off. I know he's got some words planned.
You made me nervous there for a minute. I thought you were going to have me do a piece from The Little Mermaid. I thought that was first on the agenda.
We'll save that for the pros.
You're all saved. Thanks for having me here tonight. It's my great honor and pleasure to be recognizing two people tonight, both that have strong Bloomington connections, and they have previously been recognized by two state organizations for their statewide work to benefit children's and families. These two individuals are examples of the great leadership that allows Bloomington to be an educational leader, supporting all of our learners on their pathway to be college and career-ready. And so we will start with Senator Melissa Halverson Wicklund, if you would come forward. And Senator Halverson Wicklund was recently recognized and given the 2014 Award of Excellence by the Minnesota School Age Child Care Alliance. In her first term as a senator, Melissa is vice-chair of the Health, Human Service, and Housing Committee. She also serves on the Education, E-12 Finance, and State Local Government Committees. Her legislative priorities are education, with an emphasis on early education, health care and children's mental health, as well as job creation. She has also put an emphasis on building up community support systems to help families reduce the achievement gap. MNSACA, the Minnesota School Age Child Care Alliance, recognized Melissa's efforts as chief author of a bill that allowed school districts across the state of Minnesota to receive higher childcare subsidy rates after they demonstrated high quality through the Minnesota After-School Accreditation Program. Already this year, 60 families have received increased support to attend the Bloomington Kids Safari After-School/Before-School Child Care Program. This additional support helps assure quality care for children and increased opportunities for parents to return or to stay in the workforce. Senator Halverson Wicklund signed on the bill right away and was credited by MNSACA as being the key player to overcome roadblocks to pass this piece of legislation. They say it was only with her perseverance and support that this was possible. So on behalf of the Bloomington School Board and the families of Bloomington, I'd like to recognize Senator Halverson Wicklund for this legislation and the award. We, of course, all take special pride in the fact that she is also resident of Bloomington and a past member of this board, and also a chairman of our board. And we also like to recognize that she gave up her last, probably free evening, because the 2014 legislative session starts tomorrow morning. So we thank and honor Melissa Halverson Wicklund. And with that, I'll give Melissa a chance to say a word or two if she'd like.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom, and thank you to all of you for recognizing me for the award. It certainly is, it was an honor to receive the award. I took a lot of pleasure in working on the legislation last year, and it was really an honor to receive the award at the conference, the same time that Dr. Cattigan was receiving her award, and she's done so much in the area of early childhood. So I, it was my pleasure to work on the legislation. I felt like it matched a lot of the goals that I have for increasing high-quality out-of-school experiences for kids, and this is a way that the state can help, help to encourage that. So it was very interesting to work on and certainly matches the goals that I've had here in Bloomington, working on the school board, you know, to increase the good experiences that kids have, both in school and outside of school, because it's so important. So again, thank you for having me tonight, and we do start tomorrow at noon, and actually we've been working for several weeks now, so it'll be good to get started with the formal process and work on legislation again. So thank you again for having me.
And then again, in being the leader, it's always good to take home all the prizes that you can. At that conference, I think there were three individuals that were recognized, and two of them had Bloomington ties. So thanks to both of these individuals that keep us up at the top of the leaderboard by their fine work. The second presentation tonight, as I said, at the same event where Senator Halverson Wicklund received her award, the Minnesota Association for the Education of Young Children, MNAEYC, presented Dr. Karen Cattigan with their 2014 Distinguished Service Award. She is recognized as an education innovator focused on improving the lives and outcomes of young children and their families, especially those at risk. She is known for bringing together desperate people and ideas to improve systems to that end. In their recognition, MNAEYC acknowledged Dr. Cattigan's work as founding director of the First Minnesota Office of Early Learning, for leading a cross-agency team that successfully applied for and received the $45 million Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge Grant for the state of Minnesota, as a research assistant, lecturer, and policy director at the University of Minnesota, where she led the development of the Early Childhood Policy Certificate, directed the Family Impact Seminars, and played a pivotal role in the development of the Wonder Years exhibit at the Science Museum, Minnesota. Karen is familiar to us also in Bloomington Public Schools as our newly hired early childhood specialist, developing strategies, partnerships, and programs for at-risk children, birth to three. Congratulations, Karen, on behalf of the Bloomington School Board for this deserving recognition, and you could say a word as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I think individual awards are always so funny, because teamwork makes the dream work, right? But this award was particularly meaningful, I think, for two reasons. One, sharing it with Senator Wicklund after the session that was behind us gratefully, and also because MNACY is the only organization in the state that's an umbrella organization for all sectors of early childhood, family childcare, center-based care, Head Start, and schools. And that multi-sector approach is really critical to reaching kids who are not on the pathway to life success and to changing the course of that pathway. And I'm thrilled to be here and thrilled to be part of a team that is figuring out ways how to reach into the community and partner with others in a way that makes real change for kids. So, thank you very much.
Just want to say thank you to both of you for sharing your talents and keeping an eye out for all the students in the Bloomington District. Thank you so much for coming tonight. We have another item on the tonight's agenda, and as soon as our folks for The Little Mermaid get here, we'll bring them forward, but they're not quite here yet, so when they come, we'll take a little stop and let them come up. I'm looking out in the audience, and I don't see any high school seniors here for perhaps their... You could be a high school senior. I would let you be a senior tonight if you like. So I don't see any out there tonight. Usually they'll come as a requirement of their 12th grade civics class, and they need to watch a government meeting for an hour, but we don't see any tonight. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to the board on anything that is not on tonight's agenda? I don't see anyone out there this evening. We'll move on to Part A. We're looking for a motion to approve Part A as a consent.
So moved.
Seconded. All right, anyone have any questions before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Turn the agenda over to Part B. We have one item on Part B tonight. Director Rod Zivkovich is going to present to us a revised budget. Get to look at some numbers tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves adjusting the 2013-2014 budget for all funds by decreasing revenues by $6,111,362 and increasing expenditures by $15,333,041.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Zivkovich.
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members, here tonight for the, kind of, the last piece of the process for budget for '13-'14, as we start moving into the '14-'15 budget. This is a proposed revised budget. It's something that's been done every year. It basically is for us to update things once we know new enrollment, the actual staff that is on hand for the start of the school year. The overall objective of this presentation is for the school board to make an informed decision about updating the '13-'14 proposed budget. The board will need to take action tonight on this resolution, as Director Bennett just mentioned. Again, the timeline of this, it's a proposed budget tonight. Why we need to bring it at this point in time, as I mentioned, we've gotten the '12-'13 audit numbers, we got updated enrollment, and we've kind of updated of any financial data or legislative data that has been updated since. Also, some of the other categories that we look at as way of updating is prior-year carryover. What that would be is if there were dollars that we planned on spending last year that didn't get spent by the end of the year, projects, those are carried over. Any updated information, such as enrollment, any additional revenues, and then other categories. Here are the different funds. We're mainly categorized into four areas: capital and deferred maintenance, debt service, insurance and internal services, and then our operating funds. So we start off with operating capital fund. If you look at where we ended last year at $5.2 million, we carry that forward to this year of the $5.2 million. We have just a small change in revenue, actually revenue dropping $16,000, to show our new fund balance at the end of this year to be budgeted at $4.3 million. Health and safety, no real change in the health and safety budget between years. All facilities, again, this is the part of the budget that is dealing with our deferred maintenance of updating our buildings during the summer. If you look at, we ended the year at $14.1 million, and the reason for that was that we sold bonds last year. Some of that is carried over. That's why we adjusted our number for the next year's budget by $8.4 million. That's the bond portion that was received for last year. So it shows now that our revenue for this year is only $6.6 million. Our expenditures are $15 million. Shows that our ending fund balance should be at $5.7, which those dollars will carry over for projects for the '14-'15. Construction fund, this was a fund that was set up in the past. It was, dollars were eliminated after we finished up the Valley View Early Childhood Program, where we got a state grant that we had matching funds. We ended the year at a negative $367,000, and part of that, or all of that negative, was due to we have not received the grant money to date. We will be receiving the grant money this year. Once we receive that grant money, this account will be closed out. Capital projects, which is our technology budget, no real change in the overall budget between what we planned this year and what we're actually going to be coming in this year. The only real difference is that we did some early spending within in '12-'13, and then that fund balance is just carried forward. Debt service, the change in debt service fund is, show that we're, our ending fund balance of $1.4 million. We carry over forward. The big change in this one is that, as you remember, we, when we sold our all-facility bonds, we also did some refinancing. Those dollars were not in the original budget for revenue and expenditure, or in expenditures, so we needed to include those in expenditures this year, which will show that our ending fund balance is very similar to what we overall budgeted back in June of this year. Our dental fund, small increase. Our participation is a little higher than what we initially thought, so looking at it from the perspective, pretty much flat between the two years, or between the proposed budget and actual budget. Medical, same here. Our participation is up. Our expenditures are a little greater than what we were expecting, still within line. We have a, we were expecting a $1.5 million end of the year. Looks like we're still projecting to end this year at about a 1.6. So even though expenditures are exceeding, our ending fund balance between the two years was better at the 1.1 versus the 725 what we were projecting. Our OPEB trust, really the only big item here is that in looking at investment revenue, based on last year's audit numbers, we reduced the amount of investment revenue that we're receiving based on what the trend is like right now. So that showing the drop of, slight drop from the 1248. We're actually going up because of our ending balance being higher, but overall, we're slightly lower based on less interest revenue. No change in our OPEB debt, and no change in the Internal Services Fund. Now we kind of get into the meat of things and the operating funds. First, we have food service. Mainly the overall in food service, there's the change of the $400,000. Basically, that $400,000 is expenditures that were planned for '12-'13, weren't able to be, purchases that weren't able to be happened at the end of that year. We've just moved them forward to the next year. Transportation, a very small adjustment, mainly due to enrollment. No change in community services. And in the general fund, which is the majority of all the transactions, because it's basically the basic operations, we ended the year at $5.4 million. Based on what our original projections were, that we would receive from the state a 1%. We ended up having a 1.5, which increased our revenue. Expenditures increased based on new projections of staffing. So overall, looking at it, our revenue or expenditures, based on this adjustment, is down $384,000. So looking at, coming up with this next year, $112 million of revenue, 116 in expenditures, about a $4.5 million shortfall. Our committed funds, that the board has set aside, a four-point, almost $5 million, will be brought back in to get us back to the 5% fund balance goal at the end of the year. That's my presentation. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions before I dig in? I had, I had one question, and it was the matching funds for Valley View. Is it, you had said that we just hadn't received those funds yet. Is that something that's normal? Do they just sort of, like a time delay, or?
Yeah, it's a grant that we only would get reimbursement once we've spent all of our share of it. We're still finalizing some things on the area. We still have a couple of things that will be probably done this spring out at the site, and once those are all completed, then we'll submit it to the state, and then the state will reimburse us.
Okay. And then, how much time after we submit, do we get those funds?
Usually, I would say within three weeks to four weeks.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, Director Bennett?
On the updated enrollment, is, do you know the figures of that?
The updated enrollment was, we were down, I believe it was about 80 or 90 students. And that was basically the report that Director Weiser provided to the board in, I believe it was October.
What was our total again? Was it 10,100, something like that?
It was 1030, I believe it was the number for this year.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, before we vote on this resolution to adopt? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, now we move into Board Member Reports. This is an opportunity for each board member to share what they've been up to since our last meeting. If anyone has anything, Director Bennett?
Yes, this past Tuesday, I was able to go to the Family Academy for Washburn Elementary, and it was on cyberbullying and social media, which is always a good topic, even at the elementary levels. And what they did, since the Family Academy was supposed to be in January and was postponed because of the, it was a cold day, so they ended up doing a school board meeting and the Family Academy, which was a really good idea, because we have, we're having a lot of participation in the Family Academy, but not much participation to the PTA, so it was good to be able to come to the Family Academy and try to engage those folks and try to get more participation. And the family, what is it, coordinator, I think that's what they're called, was able to be there and lend her services as an interpreter, so we were able to engage the Latino community and try to get some more people to join the PTA, and I think worked really well, discussions about having more cultural events at Washburn, and potentially doing a Spanish class next year after, after school for both new non-Spanish-speaking students, and also Spanish-speaking students to further their education, because a lot of the concern is that once they start going to school, they're not really getting the instruction in Spanish, so they want to, they don't want to lose their culture and language, which is a good thing. So it was, it was a really good Family Academy and PTA meeting.
Sounds great. Any other members? Director Oliva, sure.
We had our Youth Advisory Council Task Force meeting. That's me, Nellie, and Jim, and we discussed trying to expand the reach of that Youth Advisory Council to include a more representative community, other than just, right now, it's primarily the students that participate in the BEEP fundraiser. We were looking at expanding that, and our next meeting isn't scheduled, well, our next meeting with students is March 24th. I think we'll have to shift the time, because I think that would overlap with the new board meeting time, so we have to, if that's it, I believe we'll try to do five to six. Also, I had the Community Education Services Advisory Council meeting. Got to see some of the great things that we do in our community education programs. I got to make a fish art project. The Kids Create Studio came in and had us participate in that project making, and then, yeah, they talked about the parent engagement, and the Parent Institute for Quality Education, Nellie was part of that, I believe, right?
The Voices United.
You know, Voices United for School Success, yeah. PK, P-I-Q-E. And so, some good information that we received from them, and so, yeah, a lot of great things going on.
Is that fish edible?
No, this is, I don't know what it is, but it's clay, and it's very hard to eat. No, this is, I don't know what it is, but it's clay and it's very hard. But we didn't have to fire it. They have this clay that just air dries. So that was, that was my beautiful fish that I made.
All right. Director Corman.
Yes, the Legislative Committee. We met Director Bennett and Director Steigav and myself. We met to talk about the forum that we're planning so that we can have our legislators here visiting and talking to us about some of the highlights of the legislation this year for education. So we've been planning the meeting. We got already some information from legislators, confirmation about dates, and it looks that we're going to be doing this on March, is that 15, that? March 15. So we'll be giving you some more information about what the priorities are going to be from the board and working together with the school district, with administration. Also happen to be participating in that meeting because I happen to be representing Ridgefield that day as I have to present our parent engagement program from the Ridgefield schools. And I also made my own fish. And I don't think it's fair because I forgot my fish, so I didn't get to bring it. I think mine was kind of cuter.
Well, it's not here, so.
That's it.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Director Sky, Steigav, sorry.
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that attended the Pancake Breakfast on Saturday and all of the people that supported us and got tickets and came out in our lovely robes to attend. I also attended the Oak Grove Elementary PTSA. I attended Valentine's Day dance at Valley View Elementary on Valentine's evening. You know, that was quite interesting. I do not remember being in elementary and having ever feeling comfortable and coming out and grabbing staff to go in and dance, but I definitely saw that there, that, that there's quite a very good relationship with students and their staff there, asking them to come and dance with them. Well-attended parents, just a lot of, a lot of, you know, great attendance there. I also, after we all ate pancakes, I had a chance to go over to the wrestling sectionals at Kennedy for a little while. And I also attended the Safe and Drug-Free Schools meeting where the topic there was bullying prevention. There were a lot of, actually defining bullying, all of that kind of stuff. A lot of district staff there taking, getting their training there for attending this, that meeting. So, and then I also, we also had the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting where we did now elect a new chair, so I'm no longer the chair. But I also wanted to say that that advisory always has a special ward for everyone within the district that goes above and beyond for a student receiving special ed services. And it could be a teacher, it could be the bus driver, it can be, and one of the really great things is the last couple of years, we've recognized other students also, so then they got to come and be recognized at this event. So I just wanted to make sure that there will be a letter coming home for students that are receiving special ed services to make sure to check for those letters so that we can get those nominations in, so that we can recognize the people that really go above and beyond for our students.
Do you know when the deadline is for the nomination?
The letter will come out in the next month, so I think the deadline is right before spring break.
And those folks are recognized at the banquet in, I think it's in April sometime?
Mm-hmm. Or some type of event. We're not sure. We're still planning on what exactly the event will be, but it will be a, and then a lot of times the staff are also recognized by the principals in their building also at their staff meetings, so they get recognized twice.
Any other members? Yes, Director Sore.
Just mentioned it, there was MSBA officer trainings that, that we went to and we learned more about the roles of the school board and the separation between school board governance and, and administration and operating, which is always good to have reminders of that. And then also the big emphasis in the district, of course, is on reading. So today we were fortunate to have Normandale Hills finished their Read-A-Thon and generated $15,000 for their school. And in the process, so many of the students were recognized for reading 2,000, 4,000, 6,000 minutes during a two-week period, which in some cases winds up to about five, six hours a day that they had read. And of course, with the weather that we've had recently, that's a lot of time you can spend at home reading, so it's understandable. But Ridgeview was undertaking theirs, and they're going to go on a monthly schedule. And so there's always a nice celebration at the end of that. And we know we've been doing this for a few years now, where it's an opportunity for the, the schools to generate some money that they can use in the school buildings, increasing the library or doing whatever they want to do. So that's always a good thing that, that we have these constant reminders about reading in our district.
All right. I'll finish up here. I saw some red shirts walk in a few minutes ago, and we want to make sure that we recognize you and we'll get you up here in two seconds. I had an opportunity to attend Olson Elementary's PTA meeting, and when I walked in, I was not surprised to see that I knew three, three-quarters of the people that were in attendance. It's nice to see familiar faces there. Like to, to acknowledge all the volunteers throughout our district and all the work that the volunteers do. PTSA is primarily volunteers, so thank you so much for what you do. I was also in attendance at Normandale Hills and watched the Read-A-Thon recipients, also watched some of their staff get into sumo wrestling outfits and have some fun right in front of the student body. Nobody was injured, I'm happy to say. Also want to say thank you to all of those that came out to our Pancake Breakfast just this past Saturday at Applebee's. It was a lot of fun. It was, it was for a great cause. Nice to see so many different people come out and, as Don said, brave our nasty roads. We just finished plowing, thanks to Bloomington Crew for plowing the streets so our people could get out. That's, that's all I have. Superintendent?
Thank you. Two things. First, Director Corman referenced the legislative forum. Administration requests a motion to establish this legislative forum. It has to be held on Saturday, March 15th, 8:00 to 9:30 here in the Arlene Bush Board Room.
We have a motion?
So move.
Second, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're looking at Saturday the 15th at 8:00.
9:30.
And 9:30.
Thank you. The second thing is Senator Halverson Whitland talked about the start of the session tomorrow and how legislators have been already working. Our Director of Student Services, Eric Melby, and our Valley View Elementary Principal, Adam Kubis, participated in that pre-session work. They testified at a joint Senate-House Education Committee, and their topic was English learning program. Dr. Highstead has been invited by the Senator Whitland to testify to the Education Policy Committee regarding student mobility and its effect on student achievement. Date is tentatively set for April 1st, and I've been asked by Senator Minnesota to testify and support of a bill to provide additional funds allowing Senator Minnesota to add more Minnesota Reading Corps members specifically focused on kindergarten services across Minnesota. And that's tentatively scheduled for this Thursday at 8:30. Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Brings us down to the other portion of the agenda. Does anyone have anything else? All right. I will call this meeting adjourned. I'm sorry. I'm so anxious to get to you, Brian, that I almost adjourned the meeting. So now we'll have our representatives from Oak Grove Middle come on up. And maybe you want to introduce what it is you're going to present tonight.
Well, thank you for letting us come here tonight. My name is Sean Stelton, and with Brian Blessing, we are the co-directors of this year's musical at Oak Grove Middle School called The Little Mermaid. And the musical is based off of the Disney cartoon, and so you'll be able to hear all of the great wonderful songs that, that are in that original cartoon. And hopefully you remember some of those and you can come along and join us on that. We've been rehearsing since the first week of January, and the kids have been working really, really, really hard to make this show happen, and we're getting very, very close to our show week, which is next week. And Brian Blessing will tell you a little bit more about that.
Thanks so much for having us. Again, we always look forward to having some students come here tonight. And next week, our shows are, we do a show after school on Tuesday that will be a fundraiser for pennies for patients, a big campaign that we, we work towards here at Oak Grove Middle School. And then Wednesday is our senior citizen matinee. And seniors, we have multiple nursing homes bringing, and care centers bringing buses and transportation vans that comes over. We'll be serving coffee, juice, and rolls with students serving them at 9:00 in the morning, and the show starts at 10:00. And then also Thursday night and Friday night at 7:00, we'll do ticketed shows, and then two shows on Saturday, a show at 3:00, a matinee for families, and then a show at 7:00 that night. We have close to 3,000 people across the, mostly in Bloomington, but even across the Twin Cities, that will see the shows this next week, which is always exciting. So we have a few cast members. We have Jessie, Carly, and Jenna, and our accompanist Judy Cooper here to sing just part of a song from the show.
Under the sea, under the sea, nobody knows why it's in, it's in the sea. We live in the black box of a cup, under the sea we are the fuck. Each little star we're not a kid, that's why it's hard to, under the water, here we are, down in the rock here, under the sea.
And if you'd like, we have a few pamphlets we like to pass out as a little advertiser for the show. And everybody's welcome to come along and see the great work the kids.
Thank you so much for coming, guys.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank Brian and Don about all these things. And having had my children go through this too, it was always amazing. Whenever they would participate in musicals, they knew all of the words and all of the dance steps and everything else. But when we'd ask them something about the math or history or something like that, they drew a blank. So it's really nice to see them, the good students.
To, and just how many kids are involved across all grade levels, kids that are in band choir orchestra. I mean, we reach all students, and it's just a wonderful opportunity. We have about 80 students involved in the show, and the students do all the work. We set everything up for them, and then they run the shows.
Good learning.
See you.
Thank you very much, guys. Look forward to seeing you. Okay. Now, I apologize, I almost rushed to the end of this meeting. Now, now we'll call this particular meeting adjourned. We take four or five minutes to freshen up, and then we'll come back for a study session. Should we take four or five minutes to freshen up, and then we'll come back for a study session? Let's talk us through a lot of work that's currently taking place and that will take place with respect to World's Best Workforce. How does that blend with our respective board goals, district goals, superintendent goals? And so tonight, we have the opportunity just to sort of sit back and reflect and say, what do we think? What did we like? What would we like to see happen better, more of? And without trying to lead you into too much conversation, I'll just sort of leave it there and ask that, who wants to start? Go ahead. We're a little bit more informal with the study sessions. You don't need to ask permission to speak. Just go right ahead. Yeah, Jim?
Were we going to get, receive whatever summaries and points? Because I think some of that was to do with our...
It should be. It's in your closed computer. It's on Dawn's computer, which is open.
Oh, you mean, we have to use our computers for study sessions?
But we don't have the, we don't have the goals here, the goals that we came up.
Yeah.
So that would be nice to have that list as well, you know, all the, you know, the lists that we made together. It would be nice to have.
They should be electronic.
Are they? I just can see, can see...
They were copied pretty much as we had written.
Yeah. I mean, those here are kind of condensed, you know, like, this is the idea of what we did with the goals, but not the goals that we, that we wrote in those lists. Or is it just me not seeing them?
Page four.
Oh, ours were.
You know, I'm not looking at the electronic version, I'm looking at my hard copy.
Oh, is it page four, maybe?
We have a different copy that we do.
Do you have page four on the presentation?
Board of Education goals.
There we go.
It says, and then underneath it, the superintendent's goal.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I can see them now. Let's see.
Well, then, I think it's great.
(laughing).
So what did, let's, let's ask a simple question, a fun one. What did we like about Saturday's presentation? What, what did we think went well?
I think it was a valuable time. I went into it not knowing what to expect, not sure if it was just going to be, you know, us all sitting around a table trying to figure out, hammer on stuff. But it was, conceptually, I thought it was, it was great. As Jim had mentioned in the meeting a few minutes ago, it's always nice to have reminders of the difference between management versus governance, priorities and goals, and how to phrase the questions and, and phrase what it is that we're looking for and, and sort of putting a framework over what it is that we should be focused on versus what the administration should be focused on. The downside that I saw was that it was three hours, and so we didn't have a lot of time to do, to maybe get into so many of the specifics that maybe we need to get into. Like, for instance, World's Best Workforce, successfully implementing that this year is definitely a board goal, but there are others, and we didn't have an opportunity to really flesh those out. It was what I felt.
Okay. That's, that is, at least in part, what we're going to hope to accomplish tonight. I know others have, have comments. Don?
Well, I just have a comment about all of us that were there and, and that it was such a thing for me, coming from child development, early childhood background, to have everybody in the room, we're all talking about what can we do to have people ready for kindergarten, and what can we do in early childhood. And I just thought it was so fitting, especially tonight, when we have, you know, someone here being recognized by the Association for Education of Young Children Award. And, and, you know, I was in college that I was first introduced to that organization, and it was just fitting that she was here tonight. And I just went home from that thinking, I don't remember a time that everybody in the entire room agreed with me about early childhood education. So for me personally, that was just, you know, we've come a long ways in the last 20 years in understanding how important that is, I guess. That was really, really nice for me.
Just quickly, for those that are watching at home who, who weren't in attendance, everyone that was here was all the board and all of the superintendent and all of the cabinet. So we were, there were a lot of people here. We were sort of boy, girl, boy, girl, board cabinet, mixed around a large table, similar to this setting, and some good conversation, good dialogue. And the facilitator from TeamWorks helped us stay on pace. So that's who everybody was. But we have other, other comments? I know there were. What, let's go this way. What, what could we have improved on going forward, knowing that we have time to continue conversation? Not eons, but we have, we still have some time. We have tonight, and we have other, other days built into our schedule. What, what could we improve on? That was the starting line.
Well, let me ask this question. Now that we found it, Board of Education 2014-15 school year goals, did we all agree on those goals? That five, five or six of them are up there. And so, you know, as for actual goals that we want to have us be measured on, you know, there's six of them there with some subsets, too, that is, is going to be significant. And then the superintendent's goals, when we get into the evaluation of the superintendent for 2014-15, or are we going to try and reword some of these goals so that there might be four of them or five of them or something a little bit? Because these are pretty, pretty big and pretty grandiose.
Well, Superintendent.
Yeah, I'd like to help. As the chair said, for the viewing audience, we spent all Saturday, three hours on Saturday. When I say we, it was the school board and all the cabinet, we all participated together. And there were three objectives for Saturday. First was to, where we went to gain an understanding of the World's Best Workforce and integration funding requirements that were prescribed by the state legislature. So we were required to meet those expectations. Second thing is to learn about the preparation of and development of board goals and superintendent goals, which has to lay the foundation for us to get ready to do those things. And the third was learning how we're going to work as a team to accomplish those objectives, learn about the World's, meet the expectations of World's Best Workforce and integration law, and learn how to work together to develop the goals for both the board and superintendent. What you have in front of you, what you're talking about, Director Sorum, are suggestions. This is just some thoughts that we had to set the groundwork for an upcoming meeting. We're hoping to set the meaningful march for the school board to get together, for us to go over these school board goals and superintendent goals and see if we can reach agreement. Nothing was done on Saturday because it was only a study session. No action could be taken at that time, and no action could be taken tonight. We need a special board meeting, a board meeting to do that. So that was the purpose, is to accomplish those three things, and I believe we've accomplished those three things.
Superintendent took the words out of my mouth. It was, this was just the, the starting point. And so for those that are listening at home, that we had a couple of big whiteboards where the notes were taken. And those notes are transcribed into this particular presentation that everyone has. So no, we didn't, didn't vote on anything or decide anything because, as superintendent says, we, that was a study session or a retreat, and we, we don't vote at retreats. So if you wanted to add, subtract, or multiply these, you know, that is, that is the discussion that we should have. Yeah, Dawn, you had your...
Well, I just, I just wanted to know, are we planning on doing that conversation within a board meeting, another meeting outside of a board meeting? I'd kind of like to get going on it, so I'm just trying to, can we get it planned, and when can we get it done?
Well, that, that's a great question, and that's part of what, what I hope we can accomplish tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. Now that the conversation is...
Did you have a, did you have a timeframe in mind?
Well, the third Monday of the month is usually held open as a placeholder. We have a second Monday that is a board meeting. The fourth Monday is a board meeting, followed by a study session if needed, and we keep that third meeting, the third Monday, open. So we could use that third Monday, the one coming up in, in May, I believe, is, I'm sorry, March is the 17th. Check your calendars to make sure my, my calendar is right.
St. Patrick's Day. I don't know. I won't have to wear green.
Yeah, I don't have to work this year. St. Patrick's Day, isn't that a federal holiday? We can have board meetings on St. Patrick's Day?
I'm with you, Rick.
Okay, well, we could make that the 18th, Tuesday.
No, we could do Monday.
No, Monday's fine.
Monday's better.
Well, then we all have to wear green.
Well, only if you want to be Irish.
I could be Scandinavian Irish, however. But yes, that's, that's the date I'm looking for. And I think that the agenda on that study session should be just these goals, getting them together, getting them ready, getting them in a form that we can agree on, and then at our next meeting, we'll vote on them.
And then the procedure for that, if we have ideas for it, can we just, would we email you in advance? Would we bring, or would, do we just bring the ideas to the meeting? How do we, I guess, I don't know featureally how we...
You're certainly welcome to send them to, to myself. I, I would, I would caution you against sending them to everyone. If we get into replying on all, then we don't want to break any open meeting.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if you wanted to just compile a list before the meeting, and then at the meeting, hand them out, or if we wanted to just...
I'll just put them together, and I, I, you have my promise not to edit. So if you misspell a word, it'll be misspelled when I put it together. Yeah, Dawn?
Would it be all right, as long as we're not all discussing them, so if we all sent ideas to you, you compiled them, can we get those ahead of the meeting so we have a chance to look at those ideas and think about them?
It's not only right, it's prudent.
Okay.
I'll, I'll put them together. So let's just say that before that meeting, since it's March 17th, how about if you give me, give me a week ahead, then I can put them together, and you guys can all digest them for at least a week?
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
That's good.
If you need more time, let me know. But I want to give you as much time as you can to look them over and to think about them. Certainly, I would imagine with seven bright minds, well, six and myself, that we might have some ideas that overlap. So, you know, we can cull the herd, as it were. Yes, Superintendent?
I need to show the board that it's important that we move on this thing, because if the board does agree upon goals that have monetary implications, we need to know that for the budget plan for the next year.
Yeah.
And then is that meeting, is that just board goals, or are we looking at board and superintendent goals?
I think they're both.
Both, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to string this out any longer than it needs to.
And is that a meeting just school board, or school board and cabinet again? What, who's invited? Who's going to be partaking in the meeting?
You know, it's a great question. Superintendent?
This is a study session, so again, like all board sessions, they're open meetings. So that's the way we put it, to the cabinet, they're welcome to attend.
Yeah. And I think that if we get closer to the meeting and it, and it, and we need any or all to answer any kind of questions, we'll make that request. But if, if, if I get your input at least a week before that meeting, I'll, I'll put it all together in a presentable form, and then if it looks like, oh, hey, we need this person or these three people, then I'll, I'll make the request, Superintendent.
So if we're adding that meeting, since it's already held on Mondays, we don't, we don't have to have a motion to have it, or do we still need a motion to have it? What's our...
We'll make the motion at the first board meeting in March.
In March, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we do. And then that will be the 6:30 start, if I recall. The only one that starts at 7:00 is the first one in, in the month.
I have a common question.
Sure.
You know, the, the workshop was, was, was very rich, I thought, you know, in terms of that we were able to have meaningful conversations and exchange ideas and opinions. So I found it very helpful. But I also was hoping that maybe we were going to be able to talk a little bit more and in deep about the role that we were going to have as board members in the World, World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee. So my question now is, we're starting to get information from the administration about the advisory committee. Is this something we're going to be including in this conversation that's coming up, or is this something that we're going to be just talking via email? Or how are we going to handle this?
Assistant Superintendent Winick sent out an email today regarding our, our role in the World's Best Workforce.
Right. I, I know I received an email, I haven't had a chance to read it, but I, I don't know, I was hoping that we would have a lot more conversation about that. You know, that's something that we can do during this time, or, because we should have the committee by now, right? I mean, that's what's probably more advised.
Read the email.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we certainly can have that conversation. I'm sure that there, some of the items are overlapping.
Mm-hmm.
There's no reason we can't flesh out what's going on with World's Best Workforce.
All right.
Well, I, yeah, Director Sorum?
All right, and I just saw the public engagement piece that Kennedy is having on March 15th, Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, for community people and everything else, talking about success at the high school and so on, which, which is the same time as the legislative forum.
That'll be after, right? Isn't that legislative?
We should be done at 9:30.
Yeah, 9:30. So a little overlap, but don't speed, and you can get over to Kennedy and...
You'll miss the beginning.
You'll miss that first introduction, and a donut and some juice or something.
Yeah, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, yeah.
Yeah, we're done at 9:30. It's just a little overlap.
Legislative forums go longer than that. Anyhow.
A lot of discussions going on, sort of simultaneously.
So that's part of the, part of the public engagement thing that we can learn from as we go into the advisory committee, and try and, and see, you know, how big a super committee that administration wants us to have, you know, in terms of total representation of what our community is like, you know? That's going to be an interesting process.
And certainly in the meantime, between meetings, there's absolutely no reason that we can't be asking questions. You know, when you think of them, jot them down. I have my notepad by the side of the bed and, and my favorite beat-up chair in the den. And I'm the only one that knows how to read my shorthand, so I don't have to worry about that. But write them down, and then we can ask them anytime we, we want to. But it doesn't have to be in a formal meeting or study session. All right, so we're looking at March 17th. We'll, we'll, we'll look, I will look to have goals, board goals, superintendent goals, and I'll say by the 10th. So if you have them to me by the 10th, I'll put them together, and then I will send them back out to you individually electronically. And then you can look them over when you get them, take some time to digest them, see that there isn't any overlap, you know? And if you have individual questions for me, you can ask individual people. All right, I, I personally, I, I thought Saturday went well. It was three hours that went by really quick, I thought. It was three hours that went by really quick, I thought. So I thought it was time well spent, I thought it was a great start, I think, I think it was needed, I think it was appreciated, I know I appreciated it. It was, it was nice to see the cabinet come and, and, you know, everyone that was there had the opportunity to say, you know, "I got this thing, I can't do it, I'm gonna be busy," I, and, and I think we all would have understood, but nobody took that, that avenue. Everyone was there and everyone participated, and, and that meant a lot to me. I know the conversation was, in the beginning, it's, you have to poke a little bit to get things started, but once, once you do that, conversation, conversation flowed quite nicely. So I was impressed just by the sharing. You know, there's a lot, a lot of new faces, there's five board members that have two years or less experience on the board, and we're all here to learn, so I enjoyed it, and I'm looking forward to more conversation. So the next time that we get together, we will not have a facilitator. I think we can handle this on our own. I, I trust all of you guys to share your input as, as I do the cabinet. You have any other, any other comments? I'm not intending to rush this, but we, we have a closed meeting after this, so no use in delaying it. All right, we'll, we'll move into the closed meeting. If anyone has any questions on this or any subject, you can always just let me know. Call me, email me, come on over, but after nine o'clock, when the porch light goes out, I'm not available.